Please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the January 10, 2023, meeting of the Board of Trustees for the school town of Speedway. We are working from a 12-item agenda this evening, and the first item on the agenda is the board reorganization.
That's your motion.
Make a motion? Have the other people. I'll make a motion that we reorganize our board.
Oh, that's true.
It's usually, yeah.
Yeah, that is true. So that's Adam. That's your motion, Adam.
Welcome. Read straight there.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we elect Luke Bickel as president, Laura DeGay as vice president, and Tom Smith as secretary, the corporation treasurer, and I'm Nancy Johnson, and Laura DeGay for the ISBA Policy Liaison, and Luke Bickel for the ISBA Legislative Liaison.
Is there a second?
You can second.
I'll second that. Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, would all those in favor of approving the motion please signify? And that passes unanimously, and I am no longer board president.
Whoa, whoa.
Thank you, Mr. Harding, for two years of service.
Absolutely.
Thank you all.
The next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the December 13, 2022, meeting.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes from the December meeting.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
Bill's trying to get a second, and he hasn't done it for a while.
Yeah, I've been able to do this for a while.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
A little rusty on the things we do once a year.
Yeah. He gets to sign the next one.
Item number three is the adoption of an expenditure goal for 2023.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speedway continues to exceed the target percentage based on the latest available data, and their recommendation is to adopt the following goal. The school town of Speedway shall maintain the current levels percentages between the expenditures for the student instruction categories and the other expenditure categories as described in Indiana Code 20-42.53-4 for the next fiscal year.
Mr. Smith?
I'll move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the expenditure goal for 2023.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the expenditure goal for 2023? Opposed? Yes, it's five zero. Item number four is to approve adjustments to the 2022 budget appropriations.
Thank you, Mr. President. In December of each year, the board authorized the treasurer, Nancy Johnson, to transfer funds between accounts as required and necessary. A record of those transfers is included in the packet, and the recommendation is to approve those transfers as presented. Please note the value of these transfers is zero because we are moving, not expending, funds between subaccounts inside a larger account. The recommendation is to approve the adjustments of the 2022 budget appropriations.
I will move that we approve the adjustments of the 2022 budget appropriations.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the adjustments to the 2022 budget appropriations? Opposed? That passes five zero. Item number five is to adopt a resolution to transfer funds to the Rainy Day Fund.
Mr. President, the recommendation is to adopt the enclosed resolution to transfer $1.2 million to the Rainy Day Fund from the referendum fund.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the resolution presented to transfer the funds to the Rainy Day Fund.
Thank you.
I will second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this?
This is the item that you referenced, Dr. Trebley, in the Board of Finance meeting?
That's correct. School safety, personnel, and also with the S.R. funds and COVID funds, transfers into that for all those projects.
And why don't you say again in this meeting, in case someone has just tuned in, the benefit you talked about, the debt-free way to, which I thought was wonderful and worth repeating.
Yeah. Back to my notes. What we talked about in the financial meeting with the Rainy Day Fund, we're able to move that money so therefore that we can do the projects and not take debt out on the community for the taxpayers. So this is one of the ways and levers that we use to get our projects done, such as a school, high school, safety project, and junior high safety project, that we use cash to pay for those projects. Also for the technology fund on paying laptops for our students at this time. So there's a lot of money going out, but it's all for students and it's all for safety.
And it's debt-free.
And it's debt-free.
Also, with grants.
And then with the grants, yeah, the school safety grants for $100,000, and we just hit a $25,000 one for the junior high. So we get as much as we can from different places.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this? All those in favor of adopting the resolution to transfer funds to the Rainy Day Fund, please signify? Opposed? That passes five zero.
Yeah, there's two. I got the master's here, Nancy. And that's just a president and secretary signature.
Yep. Item number six is to approve the resolution to adopt a public question.
Mr. President, the recommendation is approve a public question. The recommendation is approve the resolution to pursue a public question in the primary election of May in 2023.
Thank you. And we have Mr. Eric Long here. Would you like to say a few things about the public question?
Yes, thank you. Is the microphone on? Can you hear me okay? Yep. Good evening, members of the board administration. Just a couple of notes to highlight regarding this resolution that's before you this evening. Recall that in 2016, the school town of Speedway successfully adopted an operating referendum. Those referendums do have a sunset, a finite time limit, and must be renewed from time to time. So before you this evening is a resolution that makes the necessary findings under Indiana Code Title 20, Article 46, Chapter 1, regarding educational duties, that basically just renews the operating referendum at the same rate of 59 cents. This resolution also contains the statutorily required form of what the ballot question will read like, and also contains the revenue spending plan, which is identical to what this board has already approved for this calendar year last fall. So those are all components of the requirements legally to be placed in the resolution. All present here this evening, happy entertaining any questions you might have on that before you take a vote.
So this is putting the referendum question on the ballot in May, which is the referendum fund that we've been talking about, continuing that same process that we've been using for really two times around.
2010.
Yeah, so 12 years plus years, right?
That's correct.
And if I'm also understanding you correctly, because I've not seen language, we don't draft this. We're stuck essentially using the language that the state gives us to use.
That's also correct. So on both fronts, this is a continuation actually dating back all the way to 2010. That was the first initiation of this referendum. Then the first renewal occurred in 2016. This is now the second renewal, again, at that same rate. And you're absolutely right. The form of the ballot question is statutorily prescribed. There's not a whole lot of availability to diverge from that at all. So that's part of this resolution as required by statute.
Now, one of the things we want to make sure we're clear, we're not increasing anything. We're continuing to impose.
That's correct.
The same amount.
Yes, that's actually part of the question. It mentions, uses the terminology, continue to impose at the rate of 59 cents, which is identical to what was successful in 2016.
Correct.
I'll move that we...
Hang on one.
I just want to make, well, since we're talking specific language, it says continue to impose increased, right? But that's because way back when, there's, we're not actually increasing anything.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Really, we just want, I mean, this is just a vote yes thing. This is not a read the whole thing. This is just, we're doing the right thing and keep it going.
It is, yes. The point is, it's maintaining what has already been in place for 12 years plus now.
Yeah. That's working wonderfully.
It's a board's pleasure.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution for a public question in May's primary.
Thank you.
I will second that gladly.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion on this? All those in favor of adopting the resolution to adopt a public question? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Item number seven is to approve the participation in the CIESC Indiana Online Academy.
Thank you, Mr. President. The recommendation is to approve the renewal of the annual agreement with the Central Indiana Education Service Center, the CIESC Indiana Online Academy. The online academy provides our students with opportunities for both enrichment and credit recovery, and has a history of academic success with our students.
Mr. President, I move that we approve participation in the CIESC Indiana Online Academy.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this?
I have a question. Approximately, I realize it goes from year to year differently, how many students are involved in this with credit recovery and...
Mr. Smith, you're making Phil old.
No, because I knew you were going to ask that question, and I went ahead and got
the answer, and that's what I'm holding right now. That's my fourth time doing this. Gosh, I feel good. The answer to that, according to Mr. Borum, man, I have him in real life right here. But this last year, we had nine students taking the summer course, summer school course. So again, with the referendum funds or whatnot, we're able to use our funds to make sure our kids get the opportunities they need, open access to what they need. And Mr. Borum and his team does a great job for that. So nine for the summer. Is that a positive? Yeah. It's from your email.
Yeah, and we kind of use a combination. So the CIESC provides courses that our Plato Credit Recovery Program that our students use through the year may not have, such as AP courses. We have a student right now taking an AP US History course because it wouldn't fit in their schedule. Plato doesn't offer an AP US History course. Indiana Online Academy provides that type of course that our Plato Credit Recovery, of course, offers, may not provide. So we use a combination of both.
So it runs the gamut from AP classes back to credit recovery that they need because they didn't do well in the class at school. Thank you.
Well, I think one of the key things is, you know, again, just for the sake of clarity, this is another piece of that, I mean, pretty dang close to individualized attention and, you know, direction that 400, 500, you know, I mean, 400-plus students are getting at the high school. That's amazing, that the individual plugging in of exactly what they need.
Wonderful. Are there any other items to discuss? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the participation in the CIESC Indiana Online Academy, please show your... opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number eight is to present the 2023-2024 Speedway High School Course Description Guide. With us tonight is Mr. Trenton Borum.
Good evening. I always look forward to presenting our proposed curriculum guide and course descriptions to our esteemed board. Your unwavering support and faith in our school leadership always allows us to be nimble and flexible with the ever-changing educational landscape. Your vote of confidence continues to enable us to best serve as our kids, and I plan to be brief and efficient with the changes within this document so that I can allow an opportunity for any questions or comments that you may have. I'm going to kind of just walk through some of this briefly. I won't read this to you, obviously, but I always try to provide the cover letter because this is a pretty big document. I believe it's 53 pages. So unless you don't have, you know, a life outside of being on the board, you may not want to read every word in this document. But I did want to highlight some things that have changed from the 2022 Curriculum Guide to the 2324 Curriculum Guide. So again, as I always say with the disclaimer, all of these course descriptions, From Art to World Languages, have been changed to reflect the official course descriptions from the DOE course description that they publish each year. So the wording or the verbiage or the language that you hear comes directly from the DOE for each course offering that we offer each year. The only difference with some of the wording would be for some of our honor prep courses because there is not a description of those courses in the actual DOE Curriculum Guide. So the authoring or the wording of those courses come from our faculty. Always know that we have new courses and policies that may need to be added each year. As I said, there's an ever-changing educational landscape. They just recently passed the Next Level Programs of Study, which is NLPS, and that aims to improve consistency, quality, and intentionality of career technical education. And so some of the, we have different cohorts in our school building that can't count certain class sequences as a concentrator. So for instance, our current seniors and juniors can still use advanced manufacturing and architectural drafting as a concentrator. Younger students, sophomores and below, cannot use those courses. The only course that they would be able to utilize as a specific concentrator would be our Project Lead the Way courses, which all grade levels can use that. So we're, again, exploring different ways to expand our concentrator offerings to be able to check off what we call Bucket Three. And again, I don't want to get into the weeds with the different buckets and the things that have changed over the years, but we are looking at trying to establish a business pathway that can be over-encompassing for students that may move in, or just to give our students, again, another option. Students can check off Box Three in a lot of different ways, whether it's through earning an honors diploma, participating in Area 31, taking three AP classes, passing the SAT. There's various options, but again, the key word is option. We want to make sure our kids have as many options as possible. So now we're looking at trying to, looking at would we be able to offer a business pathway. And the business pathway would be a marketing career pathway or entrepreneurship pathway, and that sequence is principles of entrepreneurship, new venture development, and small business operations. Any significant change from last year has been stricken with the strike through. The revised table of contents always has to be changed after I present, and we go through and make changes, and the next pages just simply show the changes in the document. On page three, as you see, last year when I wrote this, we were 525 students. That has now changed to 560 students currently.
So my 400 is up.
Right.
I was like, woo!
So, yes, it continues to grow. And so that description of Speedway High School has been changed to reflect where we are currently. And as you all know, the incoming freshman class of 2027 is a very large group as well. So that number will not be decreasing. It will probably stay the same or go higher. All right. I think in you all's document I kept on the page, removed art history, but that was actually removed last year. So please just strike that. That was actually an error. So...
Can I ask you, though? We talked about, you know, this last year's line is best served by providing an art elective that generates students' interest, such as ceramics, drawing, painting. What did, what do we, what replaced it? Is it garnering interest?
Yes. As I always talk about, you know, course capitalism, or what drove that is that students were actually more interested in our ceramics and drawing and painting courses. And so you had a very small amount of students that were interested in the AP art history. So I believe last year, we had five students that were in the class, and we had maybe 40 students wanting to take ceramics. So obviously, we have one art teacher had to close down that ceramics for the AP art history. So there was not an interest in that, and our students are able to reach their fine arts requirement for academic honors in a multitude of ways. One way, obviously, being choir, band, drawing and painting, ceramics. So although the AP art history is probably more of an academic way to meet that requirement, it didn't generate the interest to continue to support that course.
So we didn't replace it. We just allowed more students to take the ceramics or the...
Exactly. So we had one section of AP art history last year, and I think this year we were able to add an additional section of ceramics or drawing and painting. I don't remember exactly which course, giving, again, our kids more options for the electives that they are selecting. So...
Thank you.
Yep. The Honor Precal, Precalculus AP, this is a new course that has been proposed from the College Board to go into effect this upcoming school year. However, we're having several discussions about whether we want to implement this course at the, in the 23-24 school year, or wait a year. I'm in several different networks with AP coordinators across the state, and they're still kind of figuring out what will be the sequencing for the precalc, the AP precalc. The way it is currently designed, the AP precalc is not, or the way it was proposed, is not designed to actually prepare kids for the AP calc, which doesn't make a lot of, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. So if you're having to follow a pre, AP precalc curriculum that does not best serve the AP calc students, we may, it may just be that we wait to see, wait for them to work out the kinks, and see if this is something we can implement the following year. So I wanted to include it in the curriculum guide because those discussions are still happening. Our AP calc teacher actually is attending a workshop, I believe sometime in February. It will continue to get more information. But I wanted to make sure it was in this document so that if we did offer it in the upcoming school year, you all, you understand, we're going to do what's best that serves our students, and if it's waiting, that may be an option. If it is implementing it in the upcoming school year, that can also be an option. But I didn't want to, I did not want to include it in the course description guide because it could very well be an offering that we have for the upcoming school year. I think on page 10, I talked, I've already spoken about the CTE concentrator courses available. Currently, as I said, we have Project Lead the Way. We have our current rising seniors, those junior kids, will still be able to earn a concentrator through the architectural drafting and manufacturing, but that class will be after that, this graduate, the juniors graduate, so 2024, have to keep all these years in my head, that we won't have those course offerings anywhere any longer, and that's why we're trying to see if a business pathway is a viable option. The other ones are pretty much just the view of the document where I added the AP precalc in the different tables. And then on page 15, this was language I had last year, but I wanted to make sure that it was just brought to your attention, that there's no AP exam fee to Speedway High School students, except a possible unapproved late test cancellation or unused test fees in the amount of $40 per exam assessed by College Board. So just again, to give you just quick background, College Board last year or two years ago changed the ordering date for when we had to order AP exams. It was always in March. As you know, we're an open access school. We try to encourage students to take AP courses. So that really gave us a really good timeline to see if a student was struggling before we ordered exams. Now we have to order exams by November 15, and we have students that struggle, students that things change for second semester, and that's just part for the course. This statement really is, leans towards a student that, we had a student one year who just overslept or did not show up to take the exam. And again, we are, the district is paying for our students' exams that are non-math, science, and English. So we wanted to just make sure that families are aware that, you know, please don't set a dentist appointment on the day of the AP exam because if you do that, the district or someone has to pay a fee of $40 for a late test if you set an appointment on the day of the exams. So that language was in there. I don't think last year I had the exact amount, so I included the $40 amount. And the way that has been, and it's very few students that we've had to even have that discussion with, but that has been attached to fees, and it's not like they give me $40 or pay $40 to take the test. It's just simply attached to their student fees, and that is how that has been assessed in the years past. We're looking at ways to try to figure out, because this has been across the board in terms of ordering the exams, if there is a way that we can, because this really hurts a school like us. Most schools don't pay for all the exams for their students. The families pay for it. So it's a way to have some skin in the game with the families. But we're really looking at if there's a way to figure out, to be able to have our exams on the second semester ordering date, which is again in March, which gives us the data and the information from first semester grades, schedule changes, things, I mean, all types of things happen between when a kid signs up for an AP class and when we have, and when they actually take the exam. So...
You kind of hit on the question I was going to ask, and that is, are there very many, or are there any schools where the school corporation pays for the tests that you...
There are. There are very few. The AP Tippian Grant that we were involved in years ago when we first kind of broached our AP program, at that time, we were part of Cohort One. It was several schools within that cohort, I believe 12 to 13 schools. And though, at that time, those schools were paying for the exams, as well as giving the $100 incentive for the students who got a qualifying score. Out of our cohort that still does that, we, I believe, we are the only one remaining. I could be wrong on that, but if not, it's only one additional school that both covers the exams, the cost of the exams, outside of math, science, and English, because the state covers math, science, and English AP exams. But we cover non-math, science, and English AP exams, Spanish, world history, government, any of those types of subjects. And so the fact that we cover those exams as well as our students and teachers get that incentive for the qualifying scores, I don't know of any school that does all three of those things, or any district that does all three of those things. So again, I think that support continues to pay dividends for why our students and our teachers have been so successful.
Thank you.
Just another example of how we're a little different than everybody else.
Yeah, we tried to really...
Nobody's discouraged from, because of financial reasons for taking an AP class.
Right, yeah. I know with my daughter, when she took her AP exams, the cost, I believe, maybe at that time, and this was 2015, 16, may have been 400, 400, $400 to $500, and that's just a lot for a lot of families. So...
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. Won't go into that. Yep. Won't go into that box. Again, that just gives the description of, I mean, just added that box for the AP Precalculus if we are offering that course. This gives the description of what Honor Precalculus AP as described by the DOE College Board. Those additional business courses, you see New Venture Development and Small Business Operations. Those are all described from the DOE as well. And you'll see the grade changes for the Advanced Manufacturing and Architectural classes, because again, as I said, that would only be the rising seniors that would be able to use that course as a concentrator. So those courses will be discontinued after their graduation year, and then we will continue to try to find a concentrator or pathway that meets the younger students in the Next Level Programs of Study. Environmental sustainability, I had that in the Curriculum Guide last year because that was something that we had thought about looking into or pursuing. But our Project Lead the Way teacher has now been trained in the IED, POE, and Civil Engineering, as well as the environmental sustainability didn't have the dual credit component. So we have continued with our traditional sequence for Project Lead the Way, which is IED, POE, and CEA, which is Civil Engineering and Architecture. If we were going to either have this to replace Civil Engineering or have it simultaneously with Civil Engineering, but just from staffing and just not even getting the dual credits and the training that came with the Civil Engineering, it was more prudent that we continue with our traditional sequencing for the Project Lead the Way courses. Other considerations for future course offerings, I've had some discussions with, you know, our district leadership as well as members of the board about, you know, are there some other avenues that we can have in terms of our students having tangible dual credits when they leave Speedway High School? Obviously, our AP program is very robust. It has been done phenomenal things, but always wanting to review what other ways can we, can we give students opportunities that may not have earned a qualifying score of three, four, or five on an AP exam. While we know that even taking the AP course, they're better prepared for college, the research shows that, if you could show up to college with something in hand that can count towards your degree. Obviously, we have dual credit classes now through our Project Lead the Way courses. Those dual credits are seniorly for Ivy Tech. So we would be obviously looking at dual credit programs that would be in the core transfer library, that already have MOUs and agreements with the public universities and colleges in the state of Indiana. So while that will take some due diligence and talking with our different resources and networks, first starting off with, we already have a relationship with Ivy Tech. They do offer dual credit classes outside of just our Project Lead the Way courses. They are all free, obviously. Our Spanish III and Spanish IV dual credits are through Ivy Tech. They're also free, but they do obviously require a certain test score or a certain GPA. So we would have to get the details of what those offerings may be, but I wanted to at least let the board know that that is something that we are, we, in our conversations and discussions, are researching and listening to and trying to develop and get more information to see what can we do that gives our students more opportunities without creating a conflict between, a dual conflict between AP and dual credit courses. Because I know some larger schools will have AP courses simultaneously with dual credit courses. We tried that years ago, early, before we went full in with our AP program. That was years ago, obviously, but it wasn't as successful as we would have liked to have been. So we're looking at options of, could we have some dual credit offerings that don't compete with our AP courses? And that ends any, my presentation. I'm here for any questions or comments that you may have.
Are pre-AP calc teachers licensing, licensing wise, is that Passwater, do we have enough teachers on staff on board?
Yes. Yeah.
That would be licensed teaching on staff.
We have another teacher, Ms. Wilson, also teaches a section of Precalculus. I know our math teachers are licensed to be able to teach Precalculus. Whomever, if we do offer the AP course as an AP TIPIN affiliate school, because we're still affiliated with AP TIPIN, we send any new teacher or any teacher that is teaching a new course to the AP Summer Institute.
So they would have to go through that process?
Yes. And it's just a week training in July. And, yes, and we get a discount because we're an affiliate school. They go for a week in July for that training for Precalculus.
We have a pretty good resource on Mr. Passwater.
Yes, absolutely. He's actually, you know, he writes exam questions. He's very heavily involved with the College Board. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Is, so the, I see that the prereq for the Precalc AP is Algebra II. So is the idea that I'm taking Algebra with an eighth grader, Algebra II as a ninth grader, and this would be a sophomore class?
No. So you take Algebra as an eighth grader, honor prep geometry as a freshman, Algebra II as a sophomore.
Okay.
Then the Precalc, it would be your junior year.
And so if, without this in the, in the progression, what are we, what are people taking in their junior year right now?
Right now, we have Precalc. It's just not designated AP. So if we don't go with the AP designation this year, it would be what we've always done the past 15 years. They would be in Precalc as a junior to prepare for the Calculus. Again, the dilemma, as I mentioned with the Precalculus, was that the sequencing didn't properly prepare kids for Calculus. And I think the thought when they did the AP Precalculus was it being a course that students who may not have reached Calculus would be able to still have an AP or a college, college credit opportunity before they graduated. The dilemma for us is that that probably would impact, if we look at our students that made it past Algebra II that are not in Precal, not in Calculus, but instead in what we call Trig Finite, I believe it's nine students that this would have impacted. So to try to have, you know, an AP Precalculus course for nine students and to make that work in the schedule is probably not feasible. And the other part of it was that the Precalc, that the kids were taking for Calculus, and this is maybe giving you too much information, but the kids that were going to be taking, the kids who were on an honor track of math that did Algebra, they would have been in a regular Precalc, and these kids would have been in an AP Precalc. And again, I don't know how you explain that to parents, that your kid is taking Calculus, but they're not taking an AP Precalculus. So we were just, it's been a lot of different information, a lot of meetings. Most, when, the last meeting I was in, most schools were saying they were probably waiting as well. But again, this is a fluid kind of scenario. So something could come out in the next couple of months, know this, and what we would probably do is, we have currently three sections of regular Precalc. We would designate those three sections as AP Precalc, and our kids, nothing would really change in terms of our students. It would just be another AP opportunity for those students. But we obviously want to make sure that they're prepared for when they take Calculus, because that's even more college credits.
Right.
For when you go to college.
Yep. Love it. That makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this?
We've had a motion. I think, no. But I think the issue becomes, do we approve it now with the caveat that if the state has changes or things that we allow them to change it, but let them go ahead and get moving on it, I think is, is the question. And I think we should, I guess.
Put down the motion.
I'll make a motion that we'll accept the Course Description Guide with the caveat that if the state requires other changes, or there's punctuation, or minor changes that may be made, that they can decide with those. But I'll make the motion that we approve the Course Description Guide.
I'll, go ahead.
I'll second that. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
The only thing that I would add to that, and I don't think it even rises to like the place of a friendly amendment, but that, as the way we've done this in the past, that if something major comes, then you let us know.
Yep.
But this, this seems really pretty easy this year.
All in favor of approving the 2324 Speedway High School Course Description Guide with any necessary changes or adjustments that come from the state? All in favor? Opposed? That passes. Thank you very much, Ms. Borum.
Absolutely. Appreciate your time.
Item number nine is acknowledgment of grants received. My number, thank you. And those grants total $482,164.43.
We'll take it.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number 10 is to approve the personnel report.
January personnel report has several items for your consideration this evening, 16 to be exact. The first one is dismissal of Steve Curry as freshman basketball coach. We have two staff members that have requested disability leaves. That's Maria Bailey and Tammy Essenwine. We have several resignations, and those resignations are from, it looks alarming, but it's coaching positions, and that's kind of typical at this time of year. Trevor Long is the eighth grade head football coach. Brad Long is the assistant football coach. Robert Lynn Horn is the seventh grade assistant football coach. Katie Payden is the head softball coach at the junior high school. J.D. Clampett is the assistant softball coach at the junior high school. Rebecca Hill is a cafeteria worker at the junior high. Erica Hunneman is assistant track and field coach at Speedway High School, and Brian Hunneman is the assistant track and field coach at Speedway High School. The filing of recommendations for employment, and that is Will Ray as a ninth grade basketball coach, Katie Payden as a ninth grade softball coach, Mackenzie Smith as the assistant girls tennis coach at Speedway High School. And there's two volunteers, Hannah Wrestler, who will volunteer if approved, as a swim coach at Speedway High School, and J.D. Clampett, who will volunteer as a softball coach at Speedway High School. My recommendation is you approve the personnel report as presented.
And Mr. President, I make that motion that we approve the personnel report as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'll recuse myself from voting.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? This is 4-0 with one abstention. Item number 11 is recognition of visitors and other business. Other business?
Other business.
Well, thank you all for being here. And item 12, we will adjourn to approved claims.